Welcome to the Wednesday, July 29th Planning Commission meeting. Roll call. Yes.
Vice Chair Hedges?
Yes.
Commission members Azavito?
Yes.
Rigler?
Yes.
One moment.
Pat, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
After she takes her oath.
Will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, reading of the Appeal Notice.
Don't turn his mic on.
Yeah, she's got most of the... Oops, I'm looking at the minutes. All right, sorry. In the event that you disagree with the action taken by the Planning Commission in regards to your application, or with any condition for approval of the application which is not a specific requirement of the Norco Municipal Code, you are entitled to appeal such determination or conditions to the Norco City Council, provided that such appeal is filed with the Norco City Clerk within ten calendar days after the requirements for appeals inclusive of payment of an appeal fee. Thank you, Steve. Okay, oath of office. We've got reappointed Commission Member Pat Hedges and newly appointed Commission Member Janet DeLapp. Okay. How do we do that today? Normally you'd go up to the podium and you'd have to go give me the...
However they want us to do it. Yes.
A gas?
Yes.
Do we have Ms. Hedges come up?
I state your name.
Patricia Hedges.
I, Patricia Hedges.
Okay. To solemnly swear that I will support...
This is only the third time you've done this.
It's probably the 12th. I, Patricia Hedges, do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the State of California, that I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, that I will faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
Do you want a copy of it?
Sure.
I made an extra copy for you.
Do I need to sign something?
Oh, yes, you do. Sorry. Sign this one for me.
How long have you done this? Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome. Okay, and our newest Commission Member?
Good, thank you. I keep trying and I might get it.
Oh, okay.
I don't know who I am either. I hate it.
I, Janet DeLapp, do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign, domestic, and I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose or evasion, and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to the election of Chair and Vice Chair. Do I have any nominations? I nominate Pat for Chair. Can I get a second?
I'll get a second.
I'll nominate Danny for Vice Chair.
I'll second that.
All right.
Wait, she wants to do the vote.
Okay, so I have a motion. I have a motion from Chair Jafarian and a second from Member Azavito to nominate Patricia Hedges as Chair. Roll call. Chair Jafarian?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hedges?
Yes.
Commission Members Azavito?
Yes.
Rigler?
Yes.
DeLapp?
Yes.
Motion passed. And I have a motion from Chair Jafarian and a second from Vice Chair Hedges to nominate Member Azavito as Vice Chair. Chair Jafarian?
Yes.
Vice Chair Hedges?
Yes.
Commission Members Azavito?
Yes.
Rigler?
Yes.
DeLapp?
Yes.
Motion passed. Take a moment to switch.
Are there any that you need to read, Lacy?
I do not.
Close that section and we'll come back to approval of the minutes.
I make a motion that we accept the meeting minutes of May 13th.
I'll second.
Was that you, Phil? I have a motion from Member Rigler and a second from Vice Chair Jafarian. Chair Hedges?
Yes.
Vice Chair Jafarian?
I'm not the Vice Chair.
Oh. Commission Members Jafarian?
Yes.
Rigler?
Yes.
DeLapp?
Yes.
I make a motion that we accept the minutes from the meeting of June 10th as written.
Second.
I have a motion from Member Rigler and a second from Member Jafarian. Chair Hedges?
Yes.
Vice Chair Azavito?
Yes.
Commission Members Jafarian?
Yes.
Rigler?
Yes.
DeLapp?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. We'll now go to the public hearings, 3A, and I believe this is yours, Alma.
Madam Chair, members of the Planning Commission. This is Agenda Item 3A, which is Conditional Use Permit 2016-17. And this is a request for approval. This is an existing church located at 2,000 Norco Drive, and this is a request for approval, basically, to modify two existing conditional use permits for the church, to add a kindergarten through eighth grade private school, and to add four modular classroom buildings. So, and just to give you a little bit of history, and it's pretty much spelled out in your staff report, the church has been in existence since 1964, and I just need to correct something that I put in the staff report. That's the year that the city incorporated, 1964. At the time, the site basically consisted of the existing sanctuary building, and that was basically the only building that was there. In 1972, a classroom building was added to the site, which consisted of approximately 6,400 square feet. It was an office classroom building, and it was added just to the west of the sanctuary building. And in 1982, the social hall that's there, just closer to the west side of the property, was approved by the Planning Commission via Conditional Use Permit 82-6, and this was an approval for a 14,141-square-foot social hall, which consisted of classrooms, social hall, kitchen, meeting rooms, et cetera. And this Conditional Use Permit was approved with the condition that Norconian Drive be dedicated and improved to its ultimate with, at the time, improvements on the opposite side of the street were made or within 10 years of approval of Conditional Use Permit And unfortunately, to the state, the street improvements have not been completed on Norconian Drive. In 1983, a Conditional Use Permit was approved for the property to establish a daycare center for a maximum of 60 students. And this was approved in, like I said, 1993, in conjunction with the church, and the daycare center would be facilitated in the classroom building that was built in 1972. The approval of Conditional Use Permit 82-6 and CUP 93-11 were given to the property actually when the church was under ownership of a different owner. So, the Turning Point Church took possession of the property in 2009. In 2016, the applicant, which is Turning Point Church, let's see, they submitted an application requesting that four modular buildings be added to the subject property. That would require a Conditional Use Permit, and hence the application for Conditional Use Permit was submitted. During the course of review of the history of the site and, basically, review of the project in terms of compliance with development standards, it was brought to the forefront that the obligation to provide the street improvements was never fulfilled, and thus the street improvements will never provide it along Norconian Drive. In addition to that, it was found that the daycare center was operating with more students than was approved, and eighth kindergarten through eighth grade school was pretty much established. And again, this all happened before the current ownership of Turning Point Church. So, the applicant was basically informed that the property and all the land use would have to be brought into compliance, and the applicant has been working with staff to try to bring the property into compliance with the required approval, including the provision of street improvements along Norconian Drive. And here we are. So, in a nutshell, what is being presented to the Planning Commission this evening, the approval that's being requested is approval of a modification to the conditions of approval for CUP 82-6, allowing the required applicant, oh, excuse me, allowing and requiring the applicant to enter into a new agreement with the city for the provision of street improvements along Norconian Drive. The second request is approval of modification to Conditional Use Permit 93-11 to increase the approved childcare students from 60 to 120. Thirdly, approval and therefore allow the existing kindergarten through eighth grade private school to continue with a maximum capacity of 220 students. And lastly, the approval of a request to add the four modular classroom buildings that are approximately 24 by 40 feet each. The daycare students would continue to be accommodated in the classroom building, the office classroom building of 6,400 square feet. The social hall is currently used for the K through 8 private school and will continue to operate there. The proposed modular classroom buildings are proposed for the K through 8 private school and are proposed behind the existing office classroom building and will be minimally visible from the street. And I did provide a site plan, the applicant did provide us with a site plan, and there is analysis there off to the side as far as the parking and the play area that was provided to the Planning Commission. As far as the land use, a church is conditionally permitted. That's been in existence, the church has been in existence since 1964. The childcare center and any private schools and any modifications or additions would require, actually require a Conditional Use Permit in the A1 Zone where this property is currently located. As far as analysis of the project, the application was reviewed as far as content of the site plan, and everything that is applicable was provided in the site plan. As far as architectural analysis, and again, because these are modular classroom buildings that are basically hidden behind two architecturally compatible buildings on the site, no further analysis, staff's determination was that no further analysis was required on the modular buildings as far as architecture. They will be painted and upgraded to, basically, match the existing buildings, but again, they will be minimally visible from the street. As far as analysis for the application, we talked about that as far as development standards. As far as setbacks, yes, the modular, the only thing that would be applicable as terms of the setbacks would be the new modular classrooms, which meet the setback requirements. The maximum height of 35 feet is not exceeded with these modular classrooms. The lock coverage is not exceeded. The parking requirements for the proposed K through 8 private school and the increase in the daycare students are provided per code. And I'd like to point out that as far as the church, the church and the private school and the daycare center operate at different hours, so as far as conflict between the existing church functions and the schools, it's basically a non-issue. Let's see. In terms of the development standards for a daycare center, the play area, the intent of the five-foot fencing that's required is the protection of the students. And again, the play area, this is not new, it's been in existence, and they are secured. And let's see, and I did receive, was that, I was provided with it today, as far as the social services, they have, they did visit the site, I believe it was, they have visited the site and have determined that the play areas are safe as established. As far as the DBA, the play areas, as far as the noise, again, these play areas have been in existence. To the best of my knowledge, we have not received any concerns as far as the people using, or the kids using the play areas. Off-street parking is provided. Loading and unloading of children has also been provided, and that has been indicated on your site plan. In between the social hall and, if you notice, in the existing administration building, there is daycare loading and unloading, and that doesn't cross major drive aisles. And it actually, per the applicant, it's also, it's large enough to accommodate at least for parking, for cars, for drop-off of students. As far as the specific findings for granting of a CUP for a childcare center, they, one of the findings is that the adjacent development will not constitute a hazard to the children, and that's something that's up to the discretion of the Planning Commission. The site complies with all zoning criteria and development standards for the zoning district. Yes, it does. Facility has the adequate outdoor play area, and based on what has been provided on the site plan, a minimum of 9,000 square feet would be required, and that has been provided. Ida finding D is that the facility is located to more than 500 feet from any other facility or is determined that an over-concentration of facilities within the area will not result from the facility. Staff is not aware of any other facility within 500 feet, but even then, the commission has the discretion to determine whether or not there's an over-concentration. As far as the other finding, finding E is that the facility has adequate off-street parking. It does, based on the site plan that was provided. As far as finding F, that there's adequate, or access and drop-off facilities will not interfere with traffic and circulation of the area and onsite. And as I indicated, the drop-off facility is where indicated on the site plan. And as far as the location of safety, that's up to the Planning Commission. Finding G, that the facility will not materially reduce the privacy or use of otherwise enjoyed by adjoining properties, that's a discretion of the Planning Commission. And finally, the finding that the design will minimize a degree possible excessive noise impacts to adjoining properties, and that's, again, up to the discretion of the Planning Commission. And in addition to that, there's findings that have to be made for daycare center, and those have incorporated into the conditions of approval. As far as the overall findings for granting of Conditional Use Permit, those have been outlined in your staff report as well. I won't go into them in detail, but I can answer questions if the commission has questions. Those have also been transferred into the conditions of approval should the commission determine that the approval of the application before you is warranted. And let's see, before I conclude, we did send, we did get letters of support, and those were provided to the Planning Commission. We also did get a letter in opposition, and that was also provided to the Planning Commission. And before I conclude, the applicant would like to, well, approach the commission as far as two conditions that they would like to see amended, and they can discuss that a little more, but just to give you a little bit of, just a quick summary of what they would like to see amended in the conditions of approval that were provided in the draft resolution, is, first of all, is Condition 8. As it reads, this is not approval to begin work. No work shall be commenced until the city of Norco has issued building permits and all other appropriate permits. The applicant has reached out to staff, and it is requesting that the, you know, the Planning Commission at least allow the modular classroom buildings to be stored on the property while they are getting permits. And should the commission determine that that is appropriate, at a minimum, the applicant would be required not be allowed to do any work on the buildings until they get appropriate permits, and that these modular classrooms are secured so that they don't pose a threat to, you know, the people or the children that are there. But again, the applicant will be approaching the Planning Commission and making that request. And also, Condition Number 32. As far as Condition Number 32, that that condition specify that this only applies to new buildings that are over 2,500 square feet and not the modular buildings that are individually, they're less than 2,500 square feet. With that, I will conclude. Answer any questions. Again, the resolution for approval has been provided to the Planning Commission should the commission determine to approve the project. With that, I will conclude my presentation. Answer any questions. The applicant and representative are here, and with that, I will conclude. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Alma. Questions of staff? Danny?
Yeah, you had the parking, is that including the handicap parking that you have the totals?
Yes.
That is? And I was trying to read through here, because I must have missed it, on the modulars, what age group is going to be in the modulars?
The age group, that's going to be occupying the, well, it's going to be used by the K through 8, specifically the age group, I don't know, but it will be used by the private school, the K through 8. And the applicant could probably elaborate a little more as far as...
11? What, how old?
The K through 8, which is a kindergarten through eighth grade, that's, what is it, 5 through 12?
Okay.
12 years old? Yeah, I believe so.
Five? Okay. I was just wondering about the bathrooms, if they were going to be a certain age in that one, bathrooms be accessible to younger kids and built appropriately for the age, that's what I was wondering. And, okay, that's all.
Is it Janet? Is it Janet? Janet. Well, give us a few times.
No, I don't have any questions at this point.
Phil, questions of staff?
Yeah, I got, there's a couple of conditions here, I just, I need a little more clarification, and part of it is in response to the one letter in opposition that we received. So, first one, number 18, construction, this is our normal construction activity notice, 16? I'm sorry, 18. It's our normal construction activity notice. This neighbor identified that they have worked previously outside of that window. They've done work onsite, and so I just want to confirm that if they violate that, that the Conditional Use Permit or the building permitting is somehow suspended. How do we normally handle it if somebody operates outside of the allowable hours?
It's, it becomes a violation, which is addressed by code enforcement, and we address it from that angle.
Okay. The second one is number 22, and it talks about the sizing of the sewer laterals. There's quite a bit of detail in this letter that we've received regarding the sewer. Do we have engineering on that? Do we have engineering on the sewer that they put in to understand that it's appropriate for these buildings?
I do not have it, but it has to be determined that they are adequate. And again, what was it, two years ago, I believe, they connected to the sewer system? And, you know, they will be required, they will be required to be connected to the sewer, these modular classrooms, and that will have to be determined whether it's adequate. If not, it has to be upgraded.
Okay. Number 38, regarding, it says, shall be licensed or deemed exempt. How do you become exempt from licensing?
That would be, that's pretty much a condition that falls on the burden of the state. They do have their licensing, they provided me a copy, so it's obvious that they're not exempt, but that's a standard condition that comes from the code, that they don't need licensing if they're exempt, but that falls on the criteria of the state.
Okay. And then on number 41, regarding all these fees?
Yeah.
Is this including, I mean, considering the fact that the street improvements were never done, is this only considering doing the improvements now, or is there some punitive fine or otherwise that's in there for not doing it when they were supposed to and operating anyway?
No, the only, you mean installing now, the conditions being constructed, excuse me, the street improvements being constructed now? The intent is to allow them to, you know, let's see, pay, let's see...
$25,000 a year?
Yes, until it's pretty much paid in full.
Okay. So, that means that sometime about 10 years from now, we're going to pave Norconian?
And it's in loofahs, so, yeah, instead of the actual street improvements.
Okay, so what it means is that sometime in about 10 years, we'll have Norconian paved?
If that's what...
No, no, there is really no connection between that and the paving of Norconian. City can still move ahead and pave Norconian if it chooses to do so. So, that is, it's not, like, the city won't pave Norconian until this amount is paid off.
Okay. All right. Good enough. Thank you.
John, questions of staff?
I have a few, obviously. I want to say, five years ago, we had permit, a request from the Temple for building above Turning Point. Part of the conditions that we came up with was because of a change in the hardscape and the softscape of the area in regards to drainage. Part of their CUP, they were requiring to, and I'm just shooting from the hip here, they were being required to put, I don't know what it's called, a retention basin?
Retention basin.
And they were being required to put drainage down the Norconian Drive so that houses like myself, that's a block and a half away, aren't inundated with floodwaters like we were two years ago. And I wasn't really privy to what they were talking about at the time when we passed, when we talked about that CUP, but when we had that torrential downpour, I saw what it meant. So, now we're talking about the Turning Point, changing hardscape, eliminating landscaping, which would absorb water. I'm not seeing anything to do with water retention basin or drainage control, and I'm, I have some serious concerns there. That's number one. Do we have anything in the plan for water drainage? Because as it is right now, I mean, I like Turning Point, two of my grandkids went there, I love it, but I have to be respectful of the people that live below it, including myself. Is there anything in the plans as far as water retention, water control, water drainage?
There's, no, nothing on this plan. This did go to engineering for comments and concerns. If it's a new development, that's when they have to put in the, when it's completely new development.
Right.
This is an existing site, and the majority of the classroom area is going to be already on impervious surface. Yes, I was out there today, and it's already, it's concrete. So, they're not eliminating any landscaping to install the classrooms, so basically...
Okay, but there's still no control of water runoff?
They will be...
From what we have. If you're saying it's already there, and the drive-through is already there, and the place where the classrooms is going to be is already concrete, if it's already hardscape, do we have any way of controlling the runoff, the water drainage?
Well, it will, it won't be able to redirect drainage, and it will have to, pretty much, you'll have to show how it's going to drain. It's going to have to drain towards the street or wherever the existing drainage pattern is.
Okay.
And that has to comply with the engineering standards.
Yeah. So, what we have as far as drainage right now, the engineering specifications weren't in place when the parking lot and all that stuff was... weren't in place when the parking lot and all that stuff was put in. We didn't have drainage control or any of that.
We didn't. I think I understand your question. We did at the time, the requirement for like installation of retention basins and all, that's, that's fairly new. Again, this is, probably went into effect, I think, maybe, gosh, with the WQMP requirements. And that was probably, it's been maybe, oh, gosh, I'd have to say maybe within the last six or seven years. Yeah.
Second thing, traffic control, traffic study. We have a sig, we have a signal at Norco Drive. And then just past that signal is an entryway, but the people are, is it a signal or, no, it's a stop sign?
It's a stop sign.
So, so what I'm, what I'm faced with, like I said, I live one and a half blocks away. Right now, you're talking about sixty people and you want to double that. So let's just say forty extra cars two times a day. Already, we have people coming through the stop sign and trying to turn left across oncoming traffic that do not have any traffic control until they're past that entrance. I have a problem, I have a problem with the traffic in that area is what I'm seeing. Has the city done any traffic studies or anything as far as how to, how to control that traffic and how to eliminate not only what we already have, but adding another, let's, let's just, let's say thirty cars twice a day. Let's say sixty extra cars a day cutting across oncoming traffic that don't have any controls at that spot. Have, has the city looked at that?
Well, as far as doing a traffic study, a traffic study, no. And again, and I probably didn't point this out, it is in the staff report. It's already, the school have been operating at that capacity for several years now, probably-
At a hundred and twenty?
Yes.
Oh, you're already operating at a hundred and twenty, but I thought it was-
Yes, and that's-
CUP was for sixty.
Yes.
But it's, okay. I think you answered my question. Thank you.
Thank you.
My question would be, do we have any type of conditions that they don't get the building permit until the buildings are painted to match the other buildings? Do we have that? I guess I didn't, is it-
You can add it. Definitely. Yeah, that's a good, that's a good one.
Yeah, just because unfortunately it's had a bad track record, it would be nice to-
Yes, we can definitely add that condition.
Okay, thank you. All right. Any more questions? If not, we'll open the public meeting and ask the applicant to come up, please.
Good evening, planning commissioners. My name is Jonathan Chardlow. For lack of a better term, I'm the project manager for this, for this project. We're excited to be here this evening. This project's been four years in the making. We had hoped to, you know, have a lot of families come and give their viewpoint and perspective on, on the school and what it means to them and what it means to their family. Obviously, we're unable to do that this evening because of COVID restrictions. But hopefully, I can dispel some of the concerns that, and address some of the questions that have been raised tonight. What we're doing here tonight and what we're requesting is to really update the conditional use permits to more accurately represent the existing uses. First, I want to thank Alma. I want to thank Steve, city manager's office, Andy, city attorney John, all assisted in helping us get here tonight. There was a comment about sewer. We actually upgraded the sewer system because that was going to be a conditional use permit condition. So we actually did that at the direction of, of the city. There wasn't some type of, under the cover of night, you know, sewer work done. That was done. It was permitted. We did that in consultation with the, the public works department. As Alma noted, this property is, has been operating for, for quite some time. In nineteen eighty-two, the CUP approved the use, including over 8,500 square feet of classrooms, for 360 people. We're actually lessening the occupancy that was granted under the nineteen eighty-two CUP. The number of parking spaces that were required in nineteen eighty-two were actually based on the occupancy of 360. So when we talk about increasing, we're not increasing traffic, we're not increasing the, the baseline of the property today or under the nineteen eighty-two. What we're trying to do is make the use more exact of what's happening on, on the ground, which is a daycare and a K through eight school. So the site, the church itself has an occupancy load of 350. The daycare, under the nineteen ninety-three occupancy, has a capacity of 60. And then under the nineteen eighty-two CUP, there was a maximum capacity of 360. So we're taking this 420 number, 360 plus 60, and we're decreasing it to 220 plus 120, so 340. So we're, we're decreasing the occupancy load or the approved occupancy load by a hundred. So in our view, we're not seeking to increase capacity. We're simply updating our uses to be more exact. In addition to that, we're asking to bring on four modular buildings. And to answer your question, the grades, the grades that would be in that would be fifth, fifth array, it would be the older kids. And each specific classroom has its own bathroom facilities. And Alma's correct, given that we want to accommodate students as soon as possible, we'd like to move those modulars onto the site. It would help the building permit process in our view because we'd be able to analyze, you know, electricity hookups, sewage hookups. It'd be an easier process. Obviously, they wouldn't be occupied. They would be secured. No problem with any conditions on that. And then with respect to condition of approval number thirty-two, we fully, obviously, intend to comply with the California Fire Code. We've worked with the fire department, who does not believe that a automatic fire sprinkler system would be called for under these circumstances. And so we simply want the condition of approval to read unless it is not required by the California Fire Code or something to that extent. So that the intent would be that we have to comply with the fire code on whatever fire systems the fire department deems necessary. On a personal note, my child currently attends the school. I'm here because I, I'm an Eastville resident and I still come into the city of Norco to have my kid go here. I think it's an amenity to the city, its residents, its neighbors. I wouldn't be here today if I didn't fully support the school. It allows for more individualized learning, more accommodating schedule. I can pick up my kid at four. The next day, I can pick him up at 5:15. There's just a better atmosphere, in my opinion. And so I like other families to have that, to have that ability. So the sewer system, it does adequately serve the property. We have worked with public depart, the public works department. We did work with Chad Blaise with respect to that. While we do understand there's one opposition letter that talked about construction being outside the hours, we dispute that. We don't believe that that's, that's ever occurred. There's certainly no complaint that was ever on, on file with respect to that. But obviously, a condition of approval with some type of penalty, we're, we're fine with because obviously, we plan on constructing during business hours and required hours. As I would note, there's not much construction going on. There's really, the only addition to this property is the four modular buildings. We are licensed daycare as Alma noticed, so we are licensed. There is yearly facility evaluations. Alma did allude to the fact that there is annual inspections. The, the Department of Social Service has deemed the facility to be in compliance with all daycare center, you know, regulations in terms of food service and playground space and training and health and safety requirements and issues. Comment about the detention basin. We do understand that there was some type of historic flow that existed when there was heavy rains two years ago. That water is not generated on our site. So the way it works is that each property owner is responsible for controlling the flow that's generated on its site. So the water that's coming onto our site, we don't want it. It's not generated by us. But we've done, obviously, as much as we've can to make sure that's not a concern. So we're not adding any water to the, to the existing, existing condition. We are not changing any hardscape or landscaping. They're simply an already pervious surface that's not utilized for playground, not utilized for parking. It's completely underutilized. It's behind the existing buildings, which if you live a block and a half away, you know, there's the frontage of the existing buildings. The modulars would be, would be behind that. With respect to Norconian, the school and church were gifted the property in 2009. Not until 2016, when they approached the city to put on four modulars, were they made aware of the condition from the nineteen eighty-two CUP. The nineteen eighty-two CUP stated that construct needed, construction of half-width improvements of Norconian needed to be completed when the other side went or a, an agreement was entered into the city to how those would be done. So it appears that the prior property owner came to the city and got another conditional approval after that 10 years to increase the capacity of the daycare center. And in ninety-three, that condition disappeared. So it's really unclear whether that condition or the eighty-two CUP was meant to, to even survive. However, from day one, we worked with the public works department at great cost to come up with a probable cost of construction. We believe the cost of construction to, to improve Norconian under the general plan requirement, so we're talking trails, curb, gutter, et cetera, was somewhere about $120,000. After Chad and his contingencies and rooting for Norco, he got that number all the way up to 250,000. So that number is, is probably a worst-case scenario. And the city's always had plans to make improvements to Norconian, but they don't want to, they don't want to make the full width improvements, meaning I think the city would like to go in, or at least the public works department would like to go in and make paving so that it can, it can operate again. There isn't any immediate plans to do a full, a full construction of Norconian or at least half-width. And there are some realignment issues with the existing alignment, meaning some of it is halfway further on our property versus halfway, more than halfway further on the property to the north. We do understand that there is a developer that is interested in developing the property to the south, if that, yeah, to the south, where the big hill is, the Beacon Hill. And at that point, obviously, would make sense to figure out the best way to improve Norconian. In fact, they have a plan to reroute Norconian closer to where that stop sign is. That is a little bit misaligned. But we believe, and I believe personally, as picking up my, my son every day, that there isn't any type of, you know, there's no, there's no accidents, there's no issues with how it operates today. We're not adding cars. We're not adding trips to that, to that intersection. So hopefully that alleviates your concern. You know, from my information, we're prob, the capacity of the school today is probably the same it was seven, eight, nine, 10 years ago. It's operated great in terms of parking. There's not a lot of, there's no off-street parking. The parking lot works. It's not even, it's never full. You can probably attest to that if you, if you drive by. There's more than adequate circulation, parking. It works very well. So with that, I would ask for your, your support and the approval of the CUP. I do have Lauren Higgins here. He'd like to just make a few quick remarks. He has a lot of historical knowledge about the, the school and the operations as well. And he'll be happy to answer any questions that he can.
Can you hang on a second? Do we have any questions of the applicant? John?
I do. Does the school right now have 120 students? I mean, without COVID and stuff?
Yeah. So the daycare, what we're seeking today for daycare is 120, K through eight, 220. So the daycare sitting here today is probably about 110. It's licensed for, for 144.
Give me those numbers again. What'd you say, 110?
So today's capacity of the daycare is close to 110.
Okay.
The, the sanctuary building is licensed by the Department of Social Services for 40 students. The classroom building, which is connected to the administration building, so the, the middle building, is licensed for 104. So for a total of 144, we have the capacity under the state standard for 144. But what we're seeking today is really today's capacity, which is 110. Well, we're asking for 120, but I think the on-the-real number, on-the-ground numbers is closer to 110.
You're throwing a lot of numbers around and I'm old. Okay. So you said somewhere in there between K and eight is 220 or something like that?
Yes.
Is that 220 plus 110 plus 40 plus?
No.
What, what, what numbers are we dealing with? Because you're blowing me up.
Got it. Apologize. 220, K through eight, 120, daycare. That is the total request today under the CUP.
So 340?
Correct.
Okay.
Which is less than the 420 under the eighty-two and ninety-three CUPs.
Okay. So we're dealing with CUPs and also your licensing for schooling and occupancy from, I don't know, social services. I don't know who does that stuff. They, they have approved the, the 340?
So only daycare needs approval from the Department of Social Services?
Okay.
And that is, that is approved for 144-
Okay.
-daycare students.
So you're under that?
So we're under that.
Okay. And then 220 through K through eight, who oversees that? And what are you approved for?
So there is no occupancy approval that any state agency provides for K through eight. However, you need some type of license from the Department of Education, which the school has. But that doesn't control occupancy limits or, or numbers. It's, it's the local jurisdiction that controls K through eight. I guess I would say maximum occupancy. I mean, when I say the word occupancy, it's a little different because sometimes occupancy means fire code ability.
Right.
But really, it's, it's a local jurisdiction such as the city of Norco that gets to control the number of students that would be at a private school under the condition, under a conditional use permit.
All right. And then what is the age of the modular units that you want to bring in? Because I'm in real estate, so we have a real restrictive look at what people can actually occupy.
So I think Lauren's probably better to address that. I've seen pictures of them. My understanding is approximately 10 years old.
Okay. 10 years fits, as long as the plate's on them.
Yeah. And we're going to, I mean, obviously, there's going to be a whole building permit process.
Sure.
We're going to have to meet all the requirements. Tie-down, roofing, sewer, electric, water, all that. And then we're, we're more than happy with that condition of approval that was suggested, that it has to be painted to match. We do plan on upgrading them to, you know, Class A modular buildings like you see on normal elementary school campuses.
Thank you.
Questions of the applicant?
So there's four modular?
Correct. The, the request is to bring four modulars.
Okay. And so each modular, how many students? And is it, is the, each modular a classroom by itself?
Yes.
And how many students or what is the occupancy of each module, each modular?
So they're approximately 25 by 40. It would probably be somewhere between 10 and 18 students per modular.
Okay. And each modular has its own restroom?
Correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Any questions of the applicant?
Just up and, I mean, this can be pretty quick to be able to do all this. I have my modules removed pretty quick. But the, I know the outside's all done by the city. Has the state got involved in the inside of the modular at all? Or is this totally, or city only?
So no one else knows, I believe there's plans that have already been drawn up, meaning construction-level plans for the modular. So we're talking sewer plans, water plans, all that.
Yeah, right. That's, that'd be city.
We're already construction-level drawings. My understanding of the requirements are that the city of Norco can go through their public, sorry, building permit process to approve those. But that there's also a second, not a secondary process, an alternative process that the applicant could go through, through HUD to get those approved. Our plan is to go through the-
That's what I was wondering, because usually, they just do the inside only, not the offsites. That's what I was wondering, if they had, they were doing that route, if they were going to, which way they were going to go. The city was going to do the inside too, or they're going to go-
Yeah, our plan is to get all the approvals necessary through the city's building department.
All of it, inside too. All of it, inside too?
Yes.
My question for you is, you currently have 120 in your daycare, 110. You're currently operating the school with 220 children?
Yes. Somewhere 210 to 220. We're not at 220, but we're very close to 220.
That's all I have. Did you say you had someone else you wanted?
Yes, Mr. Higgins here will, he has some more historical background. And he can answer some additional questions in the event they come up. But he just, he won't be as long as I, I don't think. I talk a lot, so I think he just wants to give a quick few words. And of course, I'm happy to come back up and answer any questions that I could be helpful in addressing.
Do you need to cleanse before another speaker takes?
If it's not a requirement, I'm totally fine with it. Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Lauren Higgins. I'm a longtime resident of Norco, been here since '63, born and raised here. Been part of Church on the Hill and then Turning Point since 2008. Both of my kids, my son and daughter, both started there at daycare at three years old. And my son was the first child that graduated eighth grade there from daycare to completion of the eighth grade there. My daughter was the same way. Obviously, she wasn't the first. I got involved with this project as pretty much like an operations manager. I was requested to help from the pastor and the school administrator, pretty much because of my background and my history prior to retiring. And I've been working very close with Alma and staff since 2016, basically. I want to also echo what Jonathan said. They've been great. We have gone through, if the best way to put it is hell and high water to get here. And they've been very, very good at every level, both explaining things and getting us through all of the things that were required and things we didn't know, things we were learning along the way. But I'm actually here because, like I've been, I've been involved, intimately involved with this from the very beginning. I could answer any question you have about any of the things. You might have questions about the opposition letter. I was there and part of it all. And any other questions you might have from sewer to current uses, all of that. So I want to make myself available to any questions.
Anyone have any questions for?
Nope.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Bisi, do we have any comments?
You all received everything that I gave you, the printed information that came before the meeting. I do have one comment that came in while the meeting's going on. I have an email from Keith and Darlene Shook. They are at 3269 Dapple Gray Lane, and they are for the expansion of the Turning Point Church in the new classroom.
That's it?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Okay, we'll close the public.
If I could make one clarification. A comment was made that Norconian is going to be rerouted, that there is a plan to reroute Norconian. Let me make sure that everyone understands there are no such plans currently in place. I don't want anybody to misunderstand that comment. There have been discussions had in the past that included the potential for that, but no plans have been developed to do that.
Thank you, thank you, Andy. Okay, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to us. Discussion, let's start with you, Phil.
I was looking at one regarding the fire suppression, and I understand their point. And I'm wondering if we can just add some language, if the commission is agreeable, add some language at the beginning of 32, so before it says "A fully-supervised automatic sprinkler system", and we put "where applicable and required, a fully-supervised automatic sprinkler system". So in that regard, if it's deemed not required, then the applicant wouldn't necessarily have to do it. I work out of modular trailers, and I don't think we have any sprinklers in ours, so. Otherwise, I didn't see, I'm not clear how we allow the storage of modulators, but it seems like we could modify. If somebody can come up with better language, great. But "not unapprovable to begin work", comma, or another statement, "storage of the modulators until such time as the work commences" is allowable, something to that effect.
Number eight.
Come on, stick with me, John.
I'm old, shut up.
Okay, say that one again, storage of modulators.
So, I mean, whether it's a comma or period, but "storage of modulators prior to building permit" is allowable. And I'm sort of, I mean, Danny will know this, but it's sort of like you can store building materials on-site before you actually build the building. And I'm equating it to that. Nobody's gonna occupy the structure. It'll be secured, but it gives him an opportunity, go ahead, procure the material, get it on-site, set it. It'll be loosely in place. The guys will set it, but it won't be tied down or any of the rest of it until they make the other improvement.
Okay, John, any discussion?
On number eight, we are adding, let's see, this is not an approval to begin work. "No work shall be commenced until the city of Norco has issued building permits and all other appropriate permits." Now, when we're talking about the permitting process, we have one letter here that was talking about electrical and plumbing having changes made. When we pull our permits, do we look at the older structure where this letter says they took down walls and made plumbing changes and things like that to bring them up to code? How does that work?
Well, I mean, it's definitely within the purview of the commission to require that if any work was done without permits, that they get permits as far as a condition of approval. Yeah, so if you notice, and that could be definitely added. If you look at condition 23, it basically says that all buildings, which includes, which is basically existing and proposed modulators, they have to comply with requirements as far as housing schools. But that condition can definitely be added. Verbiage can be added to say, you know, any work that has been done needs to get a permit, if that's the case. I mean, we don't know that for a fact, but.
Yeah, when it comes to children, just to quiet myself, I think that verbiage would have to be added.
Anything else, John?
No.
Well, I will entertain a motion and/or more discussion.
I'd like to make a motion for conditional use permit, 2016-17, Resolution Number 2020-27. Approve it?
I'll second.
With the changes?
Yeah.
Yes.
And can we also add that no building permit is issued until the buildings are painted to match?
You mean before final? Building permit is final? Because that way, they can start work on them, they get a building permit?
Yeah, just so it's done.
Did you have discussion down at that end? I saw a hand go up.
No.
Jeanette?
I think we're fine. Thank you.
I have a motion from Vice Chair Azavito and a second from Member Jafarian. Chair Hedges?
Yes.
Vice Chair Azavito?
Yes.
Commission Members Jafarian?
Yes.
Rigler?
Yes.
De La?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Okay, we'll now go to item 3B, and this is Steve's. Oh, fine. Okay, gotcha. Sorry.
How's that? Okay, this is Zone Code Amendment 2020-05 with amendments to the Norco Hills and the Norco Ridge Ranch specific plans. And these are designed to bring the city codes into compliance with state requirements for accessory dwelling units and then making a couple of modifications with regards to caretaker dwellings. The, when the city had its housing element certified the 2014 to 2021 housing element cycle, one of the requirements from the Department of Housing and Community Development was some follow-up actions that the city need to incorporate to secure that certification. And one of the requirements was the adoption of second unit regulations, which are now called accessory dwelling unit, requirements to be consistent with state housing laws. The state has periodically updated its requirements. The most recent of these went into effect on January 1st of this year. And the purpose of the state for its accessory dwelling units is to increase the amount of affordable housing units statewide. And these requirements are required of all jurisdictions, county and city. Local rules that are not consistent with these new laws can no longer be enforced. This proposed Zone Code Amendment would change where ADUs are allowed. And they would be allowed both in the R1 and in the R zones and in the A zones, where a single-family home is a permitted use. And in addition to that, the attached resolutions are designed to incorporate Norco requirements into those regulations to preserve open areas for animal keeping and preventing overcoverage. So ADUs would have to meet the lot coverage requirement just as accessory buildings have to now. There are key components that come with the new regulations. There's a lot of them, but I think it's important to go through these because it is a change to what Norco standards are right now. And I'll try and be brief, but. So what's gonna happen is a caretaker dwelling unit will still be a permitted use in A1, AE, and in the two specific plans that I mentioned. The difference is that they're now going to be approved at staff level as opposed to being required to be approved by the Planning Commission with a conditional use permit. So it'll make it a lot easier to get those. The important thing to recognize is that a caretaker dwelling unit is the same thing as an accessory dwelling unit. So they're interchangeable. But the caretaker dwelling unit, one of the things that's required now to get that approved is you have to, the applicant has to demonstrate the need for a caretaker dwelling based upon the allowed number of animal units. That requirement would go away. So a caretaker dwelling would get approved similarly as an accessory dwelling unit at staff level. Okay, a single property can have one ADU and can have one junior ADU. And the difference is, an ADU can be attached or detached. And I won't go through all the sizes that are allowed, but there are specific sizes that are allowed for an ADU. A junior ADU is a smaller unit, maximum 500 square feet. And it's made by converting a bedroom of a home or a family room or a room of a home within the confines of that home, converting it into, similar to an efficiency dwelling unit. But it's small. It can only be 500 square feet. And it can, okay, well. So the application for an ADU and a junior ADU has to be made by the property owner. Approval is done at staff level and must be approved for construction, meaning that the building permit has to be issued within 60 days of application. The city cannot require approval to be done by the Planning Commission. The inclusion, as I indicated, ADUs and junior ADUs still have to meet 40% lot coverage or pad coverage, whichever is applicable. And then the addition of an ADU or a junior ADU still has to preserve an open animal area that's equal to 576 square feet multiplied by the allowed number of animal units on the lot in question. Again, there's size restrictions. I won't go through all of them. It depends on whether it's attached or detached. But ADUs and junior ADUs, they can be rented separately from the primary residence, but they cannot be sold separately. The parking requirement is one space per unit that is not required to be enclosed or covered, and it is in addition to the parking that's normally required for the primary dwelling. However, the ADU or the junior ADU can be carved out of a garage. And if that's done, the applicant does not have to replace those parking places, spaces. The minimum side and rear yard setbacks for an ADU is four feet, whereas for an accessory building, it's five feet. So ADUs by state law can go up to four feet. They're all subject to the payment of application fees. ADUs that are less than 750 square feet, excuse me. ADUs that are 750 square feet or larger are subject to impact fees. Anything smaller than that does not have to pay impact fees. And the amount of the impact fees are based upon the relationship of the ADU to the primary dwelling. So if you have a really small house, your ADU proportion to that house is gonna determine what level of impact fees are paid for that unit. Junior ADUs cannot be rented for periods of less than 30 days. And ADUs do not have that restriction on them. And owner occupancy for a lot with a junior ADU is required with the owner living in either the primary dwelling or the junior ADU. However, owner occupancy is not required for an ADU. I know there's a lot of ADU letters in there, and I apologize for that. But as I indicated, the current provisions for caretaker dwellings are modified so that they are treated exactly like an ADU and approved the same way. There's no justification required, and that is currently required. And you did, you did, there's an addition I want to talk about in a minute. But you did receive an opposition letter. And one of the points that was brought out in the opposition letter is that after you allow an accessory dwelling unit and a caretaker dwelling unit, you're gonna eat up a property. Like I said, a caretaker dwelling is an ADU, so you can't have both. If you have a caretaker dwelling, you cannot have another ADU. But every property can have one ADU and one junior ADU, and that's it. So the change that I want to give you, I hand it out to you, and I'll just read it into the record. This is in the resolution for for the Zone Code Amendment, and it's under, let's give you the page. I'll give you the page that has all of the red marks in it. It's on page six with number N. So number N would be changed to read, "An accessory dwelling unit shall not be considered a new residential unit for purposes of calculating connection fees or capacity fees for water and sewer services. Attached, this is the new part, "Attached accessory dwelling units are not required to be metered separately from the primary dwelling for any city utility or other public utility." This next part is new also. "Detached accessory dwelling units are required to be metered separately from the primary dwelling for water services." And then, as written, it goes on, no more changes after that. It says, "No new private wastewater disposal systems shall be permitted for accessory dwelling units. For accessory dwelling units proposed on lots with existing septic systems, the existing septic system shall be expanded to accommodate the accessory dwelling unit unless sewer service is available within 200 feet of the property line." And where sewer service is available within 200 feet of the property line, one sewer connection to serve both units. We need to change that. Sewer connections for each, there'll be two. I'll rewrite that. There's gonna be two connections, one for the primary dwelling and one for a detached accessory dwelling unit. So that last sentence will have to change also, and I apologize. But as I indicated at the beginning, beginning, these are rules that we have to implement. They're given to us by the state. Every city in the state has to comply with these. These have been the attached resolutions to, for the zone code amendment, and then the two specific plan amendments have been drafted in a way to protect Norcos' animal keeping with the lot coverage requirements and the open animal area requirements. So with that, I will conclude my presentation and answer any questions.
Thank you, Steve. John, you want to start?
Sure. Ready?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. In history books, it says that Norco, if you, if you change ownership or, every house is supposed to have a garage.
Yes.
So if you turn a garage into a ADU, JADU, CPU, whatever, and you no longer have a garage.
No, I have to have a garage.
You don't have to have a garage.
Yeah, the way it'll work going forward is anyone that builds a new house will be required to build a garage with it. These new rules, however, state, and this is from the state, say that if somebody converts a garage to an ADU, they do not have to replace that garage, which is something we used to require.
Right, exactly. So if, if you tear down a garage to build an ADU, you're still not required to have, rebuild a new garage for the new ADU.
Well, it depends. Each one of these cases are going to look, be looked at case by case. If, if you tear down a garage, you would be required to replace that garage. But if you are just, say you have a 400-square-foot garage and you want to build a 400-square-foot ADU, in that kind of situation, you wouldn't have to rebuild the garage.
I hate to do this to you, Steve, because you already know it's coming. Approval of an ADU or a JADU is done at the staff level and must be approved for construction within 60 days of application. The city cannot require the approval to be by the planning commission. Why are we even into this? Because it sounds to me like, once this is moved through, we don't touch it. It's...
Because, because you're required to review and be a part of adopting the code amendment.
Yeah, okay.
You adopt a lot of things which don't necessarily come back to you.
Yeah. Okay, thanks, John. Thanks, Steve.
Phil?
Yeah, a couple of things. One, can you, when you're doing the other corrections that you've got to do, on page six, could you make it so there's not two letter ends? We should probably just keep it alphabetical, otherwise it's going to be really redundant.
And hopefully the clean version caught that, but if it didn't, I will catch it.
Okay, please do that. Second thing, and it's also in the letter that we received from Bonnie Slager, isn't this in contradiction to what we already passed regarding the only place where an accessible dwelling, where a second unit was allowed, was it an R1?
It's not in contradiction, it's in addition to. So our current regulations allow ADUs in the R1 zone, and the state said no. So we're, we're doing this to be compliant with the state.
Essentially, the initial statute talked about a requirement that they be allowed in residentially zoned property. It was the city's position that A120 properties are not residentially zoned. The state, in adopting the second, changed the language to say basically, any zone in which a single-family residence is allowed.
Janet, questions of staff?
No, I don't have any.
Are we talking about any particular type of building? Can a trailer, like you used to do for seniors, can that be considered an ADU? Or does it have to be a built, a modular built-in? Can it be a trailer?
It can be a trailer.
It can be a trailer.
And, and one thing to note is we're not changing the rules for, for lack of a better term, a granny flat.
Yeah, I was wondering.
So if someone still wants a granny flat, that requires approval of a conditional use permit, and it has a sunset. You know, when it's not needed, you have to take it off.
Take it off.
So, so we're not changing those rules, but I don't know why anybody would apply for it.
Yeah, right.
But an ADU is so much easier.
Yeah, they can get an ADU instead.
Yeah, that was my question, too. So the caretaker units aren't going to be grandfathered in? They're totally a separate thing, but people probably won't use that anymore?
Well, it's the same, either way. If they want to call it a caretaker dwelling, it's the same rules and regulations as, as an ADU. The only difference is, they don't have to justify the need for the caretaker unit.
Right, but the caretaker units that we've approved throughout the years, will they now become ADUs?
No, they are still, they're, they're still approved by a conditional use permit. So they, the people that have those on their properties would have to come in and apply and turn those into ADUs, because technically, they still have CUPs.
But if, the difference is with a caretaker unit, you don't have to be owner occupied.
Correct.
Is that correct? But the ADUs or GADUs have to be owner occupied?
For a junior ADU, one of them has to be owner occupied. For an ADU, John, correct me if I'm wrong, I don't think they have to be, I don't think it has to be owner occupied.
Uh-uh. So if you had an ADU, build it in a house, there could be two renters in there?
Correct.
Okay, understood.
Now, the other difference, too, for a caretaker dwelling is, I shouldn't have brought this. That thought completely flew out of my head, so I have no idea how I was going to finish it. Oh, for a caretaker dwelling, you previously did not have to show an open animal area, whereas now you will. So that's another difference.
Any more questions of staff?
No.
Thank you. Thank you, Steve. Okay, we'll open this...
That's history in Norco right now.
There's a public hearing. Open the, do we have any comments?
I do.
Okay, thank you. Lacy?
I received an email. Received already the one that I received prior to the meeting. This is from Matthew Gelfand. He says, "To the planning commission, please see the attached correspondence regarding Agenda Item 3B being considered at your upcoming meeting. This was literally sent at 6:54, so when we are done here, I'll go back to my computer and email you the document." He says, "To staff, in light of the length of the letter, we are not asking that the letter be read into record. Instead, we ask you read this short statement. Californians for Homeownership is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization devoted to using legal tools to address California's housing crisis. You have been provided with a letter we submitted as part of, excuse me, our work monitoring local compliance with California laws regarding accessory dwelling units. We encourage you to review our letter closely. The draft ordinance requires very significant changes to bring into compliance with state law. In some places, for example, in its prohibition on separate addresses for ADUs, the city appears to fundamentally misunderstand the purpose of the state ADU laws. We urge you to continue this item and to direct staff to return with a compliant ordinance. As part of that process, staff should consult with the State Department of Housing and Community Development, the agency that now has regulatory authority, sorry, over the state ADU laws. Thank you for your consideration. Sincerely, Matthew Gelfand, Counsel for the Californians of Homeownership." And that is all I have.
Okay, thank you. I'll close the public meeting and bring it back to us. Discussion?
Not for me.
Bennett? Phil? John?
I feel like, Steve, I was thinking of something and it flew away. Gosh. And it was really important.
I bet it was.
In, on November 3rd, is there any chance that this will change?
Ah, maybe not.
Probably not.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion if there's no more discussion.
I'll make a motion that we adopt the following resolutions recommending approval to City Council. Resolution 2020-22, amending Norco Municipal Code. Resolution 2020-23, amending Norco, the Norco Hills Specific Plan. Resolution 2020-24, amending the Norco Ridge Ranch Specific Plan.
I'll second it. I don't really want to.
I have a motion from Member Jafarian and a second from Vice Chair Azavito. Chair Hedges?
Yes.
Vice Chair Azavito?
Yes.
Commission Member Jafarian?
Yes.
Rigler?
No.
Send in the troops.
Okay, DeLaat?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. We'll now go to Business Item 4A, and I think this is yours, Alma?
Yes. Let's see. Okay. Madam Chair, members of the Planning Commission, Agenda Item 4A is Site Plan 2020-01, and this is for a request for approval for an 825-square-foot workshop at 448 Carson Lane. This particular, this property is located within the Norco Hills Specific Plan Amendment Number One area. The property is 21,877 square feet, and it's developed with a 3,610-square-foot home, two-story home, and a, and a hatch, 648-square-foot garage. The site is mostly flat, except for the rear of the property that consists of an LD, LMD area. And the, as far as the drainage of the property, it's a newer, well, one of the newer properties. So basically, the way they were developed, they drain from the back to the front. So as I indicated, this is a request for approval for an accessory building use permit for an 825-square-foot workshop. The proposed, oh, I forgot. The, the proposed is a metal building, but it's proposed to be sprayed with stucco flecks. And this is intended to help the building be more compatible with the, the existing home. The building is proposed with the six-foot inch overhangs on all sides, and it will have windows and doors on pretty much all sides. And the wall height is eight feet and with a total height of approximately 14 feet to the peak. The, let's see, and the building is proposed at the very rear of the property. The building was analyzed according to all other accessory buildings. It's one of the categories of the accessory building ordinance. As far as land use, a workshop is allowed. It does not exceed the maximum height limitation of 14 feet to the peak, eight-foot walls. The, the maximum size is not exceeded, which is 864 square feet is the max, or a third of the house, whichever's, the footprint of the house, whichever's less. And the proposed building doesn't exceed the requirement being proposed at 825 square feet. The maximum lot coverage is not exceeded. The, there is an APAC on the property, so an open animal keeping area is required. One of the things that I'd kind of like to point out for the benefit of the property, as I indicated earlier, there is a pretty big LMD area. So, and basically, that area is not usable for, to the property owner. Minus, if that area, you know, would substantially reduce the square footage of the property, which, if you excluded, in actuality, the only allowed number of animal units that would be allowed realistically on the property would be three, which would basically shrink the required animal keeping area to approximately, I believe it's 1,700. But anyways, based on the size, the five animal units are allowed, which would require an area of, let's see, of 2,880 square feet. So because there is not a PAC on the property, the graduated setback does apply, and the building does meet the, the graduate setback And I apologize, as far as washroom, maximum 50 square feet is, is allowed, and I indicated one that's not proposed, and I apologize. But yeah, one is proposed that will not exceed the maximum size of 50 square feet. Wall articulation, any size of the building, side of the building that exceeds 20 feet shall be required to include doors and/or windows for articulation. And if you look at the elevations, pretty much every side of the building includes a window or applicable door. Let's see. Okay. This, the architectural elevations were provided to the Architecture Review Board. The Architecture Review Board did not have comments or concerns. Other than the bathroom, there are no other wall separation, none that would be allowed. The open animal keeping area is provided, along with the required buffer. Let's see, what else? I did not, notices were mailed to property owners, and I did not receive any comments. And a resolution of approval has been attached to the staff report should the commission determine to approve the project. And with that, I will conclude. Answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Alma. Questions, Janet, of staff?
No, I have no questions.
Dani?
Refresh my mind, what's the width of the driveway? How far back does that have to go at that width? What width is it? The drive through the, through the back to get to that?
Oh, minimum 15 feet.
15?
Yeah.
And how far back does that have to go to? To the PAC?
To, well, well, in this case...
Yeah, I see a point where it says 17 feet, but that's to the retaining wall way in the back, into that area. But you've got a retaining wall that offsets that, where it looks pretty narrow right through there.
Uh, let's see.
Sure, and then looking at it, narrows down to less than 15. It looks, look to me, they're saying 17 to the property line, but not to that wall.
17 to the property line, correct. It is pretty wide. I actually went to the property. It's approximately at least 15 feet.
Is it? Because you can see by the picture, it narrows down, but then that's the place where it says 17 feet, and that's to the property, not to that retaining wall. So your width has to be a lot less than 17, I assume, because it sure looks narrow.
Yes, and it is a workshop, so the, you know, there's an open access. I think I showed you, there's pictures there. Yeah, so it is, it is pretty wide. It is, yeah, it is at least 15 feet.
On the drawing, on the layout, Exhibit E, it says 17 from the wall to property line, but it doesn't actually say to the retaining.
Yeah, correct, correct. Have you noticed the, the setback, if you, further, is 22 feet? Up further, it's 22 feet. So it does narrow, but it's at least 15 feet, yeah.
That's it, I'm done.
Phil? John?
I'm still unclear on what, what the response was on Danny's. Okay, on one side of the driveway, we have a 10-inch retaining wall. On the other side of the driveway, we have a 30-inch garden wall that goes the entire length. And I'm trying to figure out, between the 10-inch retaining wall and the 30-inch garden wall, what, you, you said you took measurements or something. What is, what is the actual measurement between the 10-inch retaining wall and the 30-inch garden wall that goes all the way back?
Goes all the way back. So if you just, if you take the 17-foot measurement that's there?
Okay.
And minus 10 inches is about, just a little...
Well, is it a 10-inch high retaining wall, or is it 10-inch setback retaining wall? There's, there's no indication of, of how wide it is out from the wall. And then the 30-inch garden wall, that's, hopefully, I'm thinking height, not setback, because it wiggles all over the place.
Right, yeah, that's, that's the height. It's a tiny, it's a tiny wall that doesn't, it's a small wall that doesn't require a permit.
Oh, what I'm thinking about is, if, if you have to get a access back to the animal keeping area, which we always require, what's the, what is the distance between the 10-inch retaining wall? And you might have answered that for Danny, and I, it just went...
I'm just taking her word that she said it's that wide. It looks, looks like it isn't.
Well, but, but we're not using measurements, and that's kind of what we go by. Okay, 17 foot, but it's a 10-inch retaining wall that's how far out from the wall on the, that goes down the property line? It, it just says it's a 10-inch retaining wall. So to me, that's saying it's a 10-inch high retaining wall, and then you have a 30-inch high garden wall? What is the distance between the 10-inch retaining wall and the 30-inch garden wall? Because I don't see a measurement in here. Because I don't see a measurement in here for that.
You see, you see the 17 feet, so if you might...
I see the 17 feet that goes from the property line to the 30-inch garden wall.
Can I make an observation? If, if you look at the picture, the photo, there is a trailer in the back. So it has to be, it's why, the width has to, had to been provided to get that trailer back there.
Yeah, if you look at...
Yeah, there's a trailer, there's a, it's a, it looks like a tractor is on a trailer.
What position is that, on Exhibit H?
It's Exhibit C.
See? See?
I'm not seeing a trailer.
Yeah, it's, it's a, it's a flatbed trailer with a tractor on it.
Commissioner, yeah, John? If you look at Exhibit C?
You keep going, this way.
This way?
No, keep going, no.
This way?
Nope, nope, you're, you're good. You're coming this way. Yeah, keep going. Keep going.
Keep going. Oh, okay.
There you go.
There you go. But that one's a better picture of it, yeah. Yeah, but it's just back here is where I'm talking about it.
Yeah.
Yeah, but a tractor ain't that wide. A tractor could get through 10 feet.
Well, it's, it's a flatbed trailer.
Yeah, that'd be 10 foot. You've got to be in a, in the width of a street, between the lines, it'd be less than 10. So it would get through, but not 17.
Can I suggest, just to put this to bed, that we're out of condition that there must be 15 foot maintained all the way to whatever part of the PAC?
Sounds good.
But we'll do that under discussion, how about that?
God, we pay him a lot.
Okay, no more questions. Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, John, sorry.
Can I just ask if this was entered as an ADU or a JADU?
No, no.
Would it be acceptable? Because we have gas, electric, and water going to the shop. And that could be a kitchen unit. And I, just from my personal knowledge, would that be a JADU? And it wouldn't even have to come through CUP?
Okay, so let me, it could, but, but let me backtrack a little bit. You're absolute, thank you, John, for pointing that out. And electric is fine, sewer because of the bathroom, but the gas would not be allowed.
Okay.
Yes. Thank you for pointing that out, yes.
Yeah, that would be a living unit.
Yeah, in addition, it'd have to be inspected and constructed as a habitable living unit.
Yes.
Right. Thank you.
If they want any kind of hot water in, in, in the sink, it has to be an insta-hot, and I can add that condition. So thank you for pointing that out.
Okay, do, is the applicant here?
Yes.
Okay. Would you like to come and speak? Well, no, don't talk from there, just tell me you want to come? Okay, I'll open the public hearing, please come forward. State your name.
My name is Doris Davy. Actually, I'm here, my husband went to Montana, his, his brother died, and he's been working with Alma. Thank you so much for having us over here, and it was just like a last minute. But I really want you guys to consider it. My husband works a lot with stuff, and it is ugly out there for him to just put the flatbed and all his tools back there. So it is really nice for us to just store all of his materials and anything that is going to be ugly for the Norco Hills people to look at. That's all.
Any questions of the applicant? I actually have one. Had you considered putting the building closer and having the animal keeping area behind it?
Actually, we have plenty of room for the animal keeping, and if it is necessary, right now, we don't have anything, you know, a horse or anything. But in the future, we would have plenty of room, and I think it's better for it to be back there, because it's, it has a lot more room. If we put it on the side, I think it's more like narrow on that side.
I was just thinking, because your animal keeping unit is closer to your home, where you have smells, et cetera, if you put your workshop there and the animal keeping unit at the end, it seems like it would fit better, but you hadn't considered that?
No, I, I don't have any problem.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments, Lacy?
No, ma'am.
Okay, we'll close this public hearing, bring it back. Discussion, Phil?
I was just going to suggest that we're out of condition that a 15-foot drive must be maintained for the full width to the open animal keeping area.
I don't remember what I was doing.
That's all I have.
Anyone make a...
Yeah, and a modification to remove the gas.
The koozie back there, that's why there's gas. That what you're asking about, the gas?
Want to make a motion, anyone?
No.
I'll make a motion to approve Site Plan 2020-01 as modified.
I second that.
I have a motion from Member Jafarian and a second from Member Rigler. Chair Hedges?
Yes.
Vice Chair Azavito?
Yes.
Commission Members Jafarian?
Yes.
Rigler?
Yes.
Delap?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. We'll now move to, oh, I'm sorry. Sure, five-minute break. Okay, we'll come back to the meeting, and I believe we're on item 4B. This is yours, Alma?
Yes.
Thank you.
Again. Madam Chair, members of the Planning Commission, this is agenda item 4B. This is a request for approval for accessory building use permit to allow two buildings, one 375-square-foot garage and one 613-square-foot animal keeping barn at 390 Cavalletti Lane, located within the Norco Ridge Ranch specific plan. The property is a rectangular-shaped parcel that consists of approximately 26,035 square feet. It's developed with a single-story, 2,660 square feet, and an attached 656-square-foot garage. The, the buildings, as I indicated, one's for 735-square-foot large vehicle parking garage and a separate 613-square-foot large animal keeping barn. Both barns, I mean, both structures are metal buildings with composite wall panels that are powder coated in gray in color that will match the existing house. Both buildings are proposed with a wall height of approximately nine feet, one inch, three-and-twelve roof pitch, and building height of approximately 12 feet, six inches. The, the large vehicle parking building has been analyzed according to the requirements for large vehicle parking building. It meets, it's permitted use, it doesn't exceed the height or the size. The lock coverage is not exceeded. As far as the graduated setback, there is a recorded PAC on the property, so basically, they can come as close as five feet to the property line if, if desired. There is not a washroom proposed, a wall articulation, any, any side of the building that exceeds 20 feet shall require to include building doors and/or windows for articulation, which, you know, if you'll notice the elevations, this, this had a finitude here too. And there's no interior walls, excuse me, yes. See the floor plans? Let me look here. It meets the requirement for that. As far as the, yeah. So as far as the wall separation meets that, there's no wall separations in the garage. The architecture was approved by the Architecture Review Board. I didn't get any comments for any changes. The, let's see, what else? As far as the second building, which is the barn, as far as the land use, it is an allowed land use in the Norco Ridge Ranch specific plan. The maximum height is not exceeded. Let's see, the maximum allowed size is basically 225 square feet for every animal unit that's allowed on the property. And six animal units are allowed, so that would allow them to have a 1,575-square-foot barn, but only 613 square feet is proposed, so it's not exceeded. Maximum lodge coverage is not exceeded with both buildings and all existing buildings. Maximum setbacks, graduate setback doesn't apply because there is a PAC on the property. Let's see, wall articulation, again, this, the elevations were reviewed and approved by the Architecture Review Board. What else? And I think that's basically it. I mean, there are also other analysis there that I did, but those are the main ones. And notices were mailed to surrounding property owners. I didn't receive anything. And a resolution for approval has been attached to the Planning Commission, decided to approve the, the request. And I, I would like to point out that there may have been a miscommunication. I know I've been working very closely with the applicant, they were very anxious to get this on the agenda, and I think there was a miscommunication. Two things that could have happened, they read the agenda and thought that they weren't allowed to show up at the meeting, or they were outside, and, you know, mistakenly were probably not allowed in. So on behalf of the, the applicant, you know, and again, there was, I'm sure there was a miscommunication, because they were, they were very much looking forward to getting this on the agenda, so.
Thank you.
For that, I will conclude.
Thank you. Questions of staff, Danny?
No. Yeah, no.
Phil?
The site plan shows two structures, one the barn, one the garage. Because we're approving the site plan, is it mandatory that they build both? Or can they build one and not build the other one, but it's permitted to be built at a later date?
Absolutely.
It's that? It's the second?
Yeah, either, they can build them both at the same time, or one, you know, after the other.
Okay, thank you.
John, questions of staff? My one question is that there's a 15-foot driveway between the two buildings leading to the PAC, but the overhang on both, both buildings is a foot each, which reduces it down to 13. Does that, is that going to make a difference for it?
Well, it should be okay, because we, within the specific plan, it specifically lists it that when they put a gate, they can actually, the minimum clearance has to be 12 feet if, if they have a gate. It specifically says it in there, so the overhang...
But we can still get like a fire engine there or any other thing?
If necessary, yes.
Okay, all right, that was my other question. Okay, so we don't...
I have no cards.
Okay, well, I don't think I actually have to open a public hearing, since we don't have anything and the applicants aren't here. So we'll just bring it back to us, discussion and/or...
I'll make a motion that we approve, Site Plan 20-03.
I'll second it.
I have a motion from Member Jafarian and a second for Vice Chair Azavito. Chair Hedges?
Yes.
Vice Chair Azavito?
Yes.
Commission Members Jafarian?
Yes.
Rigler?
Yes.
Delap?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. We're at business item 4C. Gee, Alma, is it yours, too?
Uh, yeah.
Sorry, Steve, sorry.
Okay, so this one, let's see, let me, let me find it real quick, okay. Madam Chair, members of the Planning Commission, this is agenda item 4C, which is Site Plan 2020-04. And this is a request for approval of an accessory billing use permit for a 320-square-foot patio at 270 Halflinger Road, located within the Norco Ridge Ranch specific plan. The project site is approximately 26,963 square feet. It's developed with a two-story, 4,187-square-foot, two-story home and an attached 693-square-foot garage. There is also, the property is also developed with a pool, and that's basically it. I'd like to, well, per, as indicated in our staff report, the construction of this building has begun, and it's become a code case until they get the appropriate permits. So this is the first step. It has to be approved by Planning Commission before it, it moves on to be able to get a building permit. So, and I'd like to point out also that staff did go out and measure, the measurements to make sure that were consistent with what's being proposed. So it was analyzed according to all other accessory buildings. It meets the maximum height, a patio isn't allowed use. Let's see. It doesn't exceed the maximum size of 864 square feet. The maximum lock coverage is not exceeded. 6.4% is being, lock coverage is proposed with the existing footprint of the house and the proposed building. There is a PAC on the property, so the graduated setback does not apply, but they have to maintain a minimum of five feet. And they are proposing, I believe it's, what is it, 12 feet? There are no interior wall separations, other than that proposed for a bathroom, and that is adhered to. The design was reviewed by the Planning Architecture Review Board. No recommendation for changes was presented or given to staff, and that's basically it. And the applicant is here. We did notify property owners as, as required. And a resolution for approval has been attached to the commission, determined to approve the project. And with that, I will conclude.
Thank you. Questions of staff? John?
Here we go. Okay, this has a gate on it. This diagram shows that it's a 15-foot driveway going to the rear of the property, correct? Okay. But it has a gate on it. And so what is, what is allowable as far as, excuse me, what is allowable as far as the width of a driveway with a gate?
A 12-feet minimum clearance.
12 feet?
And they can have like, well, something has to hold the gate, so that, that is allowed to become kind of like a return.
Okay, because we, I don't see what those dimensions are. But inside the gate, there is a, I don't know, limousine or some sort of a automobile parked inside the gate. Just past that is a structure. It's not indicated on this, but there's a, there's a structure inside the gate blocking any access to the backyard through that gate.
That's a little tough shed, that's kind of...
Uh, it's a structure.
It's, yes. Yes, but it's 120 square feet or less, which doesn't require a permit.
Okay.
So that could be, yeah.
Well, the only thing that I could say is if I were to consider this, I would want that structure removed, not to be returned, because that's one of our things, is having some kind of access to the PAC. And if there's a structure in the middle of the driveway, that's some, to me, that's blockage to the PAC.
Okay. It could also, it doesn't have to be direct, it could meander around it, as long as it could be...
Yeah, there is no director around it. There's a structure in the middle of the driveway. I mean, I stood there, I tried to walk around the property without encroaching onto the property, and that's what I saw. So that's why I'm questioning that. And that's the only thing I had, because it's not indicated here that it's a tough shed or anything else, but I know that we do need access to the PAC. Thank you.
Thank you.
No questions of staff?
Yes. So the structure right now that it's currently sitting on, it appears that the pool decking was already existing, and now we're building a structure. What about the footing underneath? I mean, was there any footing established for the structure?
For the pool or the, the structure?
The structure itself.
Yes, there is, but that will, they, as part of the building permit process, they will have to turn in details of, of the footing?
Okay.
To be checked by our building division. So we have to get details in order, if, if this approved, then it moves to that next level.
Okay, I was just curious, because it just looks like it was, the deck already was existing, and they just erected this?
Yes.
Structure. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Questions of staff?
No, she answered that, because I could tell it was put on there, but it does have a couple inches of, unless the saw cut it and put a footing in it, maybe. And then, but by looking at the posts, they're not cut out big enough to be able to hold that kind of weight, their footings aren't big enough. So it's all up to the inspector. Hopefully, he's, I'm sure he can catch all that.
Yeah, that'll be, that'll be checked. Yeah, that'll all be checked.
No, I don't have anything.
Thank you. Does the applicant want to speak? I'll open the public hearing, please, please come and speak.
Alma, thank you guys for having me here. Yeah, you know, and I apologize for my inactivity here. I've never done anything like this before, as far as building something, everything. Every home I've ever owned, everything's pretty much been in place, or I've just hired a contractor to do it, and this was an undertaking I should have probably not did. But when, when I purchased the property and talking to the original homeowner, and there was some tile work that had to be done to the pool, so she brought the, the company back that did the whole pool, did the fencing, put the anchors in and everything else, and they said, oh, yeah, you know, everything's good, it was fully permitted for a... It was fully permitted for a patio structure. And, and I was curious about the anchors, too, and I guess we'll have to check with that from the previous permits. But yeah, they said absolutely, everything was permitted. The, the patio was permitted and everything, and I thought that meant I can go ahead and build a patio, which obviously, now that I'm into this, that's not the case. So I, I'm, I'm curious about that, that, too. Trust me, I don't want to build anything subpar here. I mean, I, that's, that's not my game. So, um, absolutely, anything that needs to be done correctly will be done correctly. And, and interested in, uh, hearing about that, but I'm, I'm assuming it's okay based on the size of the footings that are existing. And, um, we went with all of the appropriate, I felt overkill, two-by-sixes on our studs and, and everything else to make sure we were, we were above board on everything here, uh, going forward. So, um, yeah, I mean, I'm just, uh, and I understand your concern about that, that tough shed that is back there. It is five foot, uh, from the wall, and there is another twelve feet that it can go back. And, and there is a more than fifteen-foot clearance from the corner of that patio to that structure. But if it is conditioned to be removed for this to happen, I'm okay with that. I just want a place for, for my grandbabies and my, my family to just have some shade and go hang out by the pool, and that's all I want. So that's, I guess that's all I have to say. Thank you for your guys-
Hang on a second.
Yeah, sure. Do you have questions?
I'm not looking to have the tough shed completely removed. Just moved so that there is access to the PACA. Would you have any problem doing that at all?
Adequate access, yeah, no, absolutely. And, and I've owned animals when I lived on Crestview, and my ex-wife took them, but I plan on having more later. So, and, and, and that's another reason for this is because my pool's right by that PACA area, and if, and if I put horses there now without having some kind of a blockage, my pool's going to get rocked. I mean, you guys know how horses are here. So that's, yeah.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.